Great, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's August 5th, 2020, and we'll begin with the Commissioner's public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
Oh. I'm sorry, my agenda says Commissioner Thomas.
I can do it if you'd like.
I don't have it pulled up right now, sorry.
Okay. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." And with that, we will turn to our departmental updates. We'll begin with the Health Department, Kathy Hewitt, if you would please.
Good morning. Yesterday, Monroe County had 695 cases of COVID, and that was up nine cases from the third. Our seven-day positivity rate is 4% as of 7/28, and that's actually a little lower than it has been. So that's looking a lot better. The rate is always a little bit behind because it takes time for all the test results to get to the state and get collected. So, and our moving average on positive cases per day is now 11 cases per day. So, the Optum site on South Walnut is now open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So they have been, since then, they've been doing a little over 300 tests a day. The Health Department, city, county, city and county government, and IU Health, Wilmington are all working together toward running a community run site. ISDH is currently facilitating the Optum site, and that's only approved on a month-to-month basis. So currently, it's only approved through August. It may be here a little longer, but we're just not sure yet. We have been working with Indiana University after they've asked us to provide some guidance and help to the sororities and fraternities regarding the communal living. Yesterday, our Health Board voted to create some recommendations for residential and community facilities to help provide guidance on what they should put into operation to hopefully keep cases of COVID down lower within the houses. There is concern that if there aren't recommendations in place, once there gets to be a few cases there, it could easily spread and go to the whole house. So, the Monroe County complaint, the COVID complaint is online form, is now available on the website. Those who don't have access to the internet, there's a COVID complaints hotline, and that number is 812-803-6360. So this is for businesses and organizations who are not complying with the health order regarding the face covering, social distancing, and gathering size limitations. It is not intended for complaints on individual people. The gathering size limitation from the July 17 health order also went into effect on Friday, and this is for private or non-commercial events that are held, like at a residential residence, are limited to 50 people, and commercial gatherings such as those in an event space are limited to 100 people inside and 150 people outside. We've also already started to get applications for exemptions, and those applications are also available on the Monroe County website at monroe.in.us. Applications for these exemptions have to be in no later than 14 days before the event, and copies of the driver's license of the responsible parties also need to be sent in by the email in the directions around the website. It's important to know that the approval of the exemptions are based on the purpose, the need for the exemption, the prevention strategies that the application is, provides, and the current evidence of COVID spread. And because it also needs to have the current evidence of COVID spread, we do not want to do the final approval for the event no earlier than one month prior to the event. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hewitt. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you. I talked with Kathy just briefly yesterday, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Ms. Hewitt. We appreciate you. Thanks. Now we'll turn to Emergency Management, Allison Moore.
Hi, good morning. I first want to say thanks to the Emergency Management staff and our Deputy Director Kate Petroline. I was able to take a few days off this last, beginning of this week and the end of the last week, and she held up the fort, shuffling some supplies around and continued in the craziness of COVID. So I wanted to shoot a shout out to her. And lastly, just to give a couple quick updates, we have a blood drive scheduled. I've announced it a couple times, but it is getting closer. It is scheduled for August 24th. You register for it. It will be located at the Monroe County Convention Center. You schedule by a time slot that works for you through the redcross.org website. And we are currently working with the Red Cross to hopefully ensure at least one blood drive every month through the duration of the 2020 calendar year. So, we haven't got all the details of that. Hopefully, by the time we meet again next week, I will have those dates for the remainder of those months that follow in this calendar year. But I was excited to make that quick announcement for you. And then lastly, for the public, that we've also announced several times, but just in case you are not aware, we do have face coverings, shields, and masks available at several locations throughout our county. Those locations and addresses and phone numbers where you can make an appointment to pick up those selections are on our county website at co.monroe.in.us. And we are more than happy to provide those for Monroe County residents if they are in fact in need. That's all I have.
Right.
Thanks. Glad to be back.
Welcome back. Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Nope.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just applaud all the work you and your department are doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. So proud. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Welcome back again. And now we turn to Ms. Ridge, Public Works Director.
Good morning. So we are paving. So next week, we are moving down to Swartz Ridge Road, and we are ditching on Red Hill Road from 46 to Old Dutch Church, and then we will be paving, moving up in that area to pave there. Back in March, we had received, there was an association, let me get their names so I don't get it wrong, it's the Association of Civil Engineering Companies. And they choose projects each year for merit awards and some of the top awards. So Monroe County received a merit award, which I hope you can see this. It's from ACEC, and that is the merit award for our covered bridge. There, maybe you can see it a little bit better there. So we received that back in March. Also, while we were in attendance at this, and it was the week before, actually, COVID, Monroe County was chosen for the, there's one award given out at that association, and it's called a quality-based award for a project. And the award reads that it's presented in recognition of commitment to obtaining the highest level of quality and the greatest public good through extended support and promotion of qualifications-based selection in the procurement of professional services for the year of 2020. So this award was given to Monroe County for the cut, for choosing BS Engineering and for the project, for the covered bridge project. So I want to thank BS Engineering, especially Jim Barker, who helped from the beginning of this project, I believe it started like 19, 20 years ago, and through its completion and stuff with Monroe County, helped with funding the design of the project. The project finished great, as you all know. So anyway, I wanted, I just, the quality-based award, I picked it up on Monday. So, so yeah, so congratulations to you all for Monroe County for receiving that award.
Congratulations to Public Works. It was, it's a, it was a very long project, but those were the days we could all gather and have a ribbon cutting and those wonderful things. Mr. Barker was amazing. He had such knowledge about the history of that bridge and, and, yeah, it's an amazing project. So hopefully, if folks are out driving, that they will come out and take a look at it. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I just completely agree with you. The covered bridge was really wonderful, and people really should make the effort to go and look at it. It's a really nice drive getting there also, so, up in the northwest corner of the county.
We just paved two, paved two, two and a half miles to get to that.
Right. That's right. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
Oh, so when I go back, it'll be a smoother drive, is that it?
Love it.
Well, I found that the, the whole design of the bridge was just amazing, and all the timber cutting, every, oh, wow.
Yeah, it turned out very nice.
It's, it's an amazing structure and a testament to tenacity of Monroe County. And thanks again for all your work on it, your staff's work on it. I know it wasn't easy, but it turned out wonderful. So, thank you. Great. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. All right, next, Ms. Giffens is going to talk about Hoosier Hills Food Bank.
Yes, we, we all are wearing our blue shirts today in honor of Hoosier Hills Food Bank, and it says something about being six feet apart, but closer together than ever. And last Friday, I had the extreme honor of going out when Hoosier Hills Food Bank held a luncheon in honor of the Indian, Indiana National Guard who are there to help them. In 2019, Hoosier Hills Food Bank reported that they had approximately 2,000 volunteers out helping. And when COVID hit, the number of volunteers dropped to just a handful of people. And so we're very fortunate here that the governor allowed members of the National Guard to come out to the food bank and help. They're an amazing group of people, and so they have, just since they've been there, well, first of all, demand for food is up 45%. And the last kind of drive-through for food, they had 960 households come through Hoosier Hills Food Bank to get a box of food. And the guard is there, the guard had packed the boxes, they'd done all kinds of things. All people had to do was open their trunk, pop it open, and the guard members would actually put it in. They didn't have to get out of their car even to make this possible. And Julio Alonso, the director at Hoosier Hills Food Bank, said that they were scheduled to open at 11, but cars were already opening up at 10, and so everybody just said, start letting in. That was the attitude, that we're there to take care of people. And, and some of the people that are receiving the food are members, are people who in 2019 donated to the food bank and who volunteered at the food bank. And so we're really in a crisis. The soldiers have helped distribute the equivalent of over 2 million meals in our area. They packed 10,000 boxes of food, which goes to seniors and mobile pantry clients, and they've served nearly 5,000 people at the mass distributions. And I want to let everybody know that there'll be another distribution of the boxes this Friday at the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. And again, the guard will be there. So, one of the things too that I heard when I was there was that Hoosier Hills Food Bank could not have continued to operate without the assistance of the, of the guard. And the director there said that what they've done was just absolutely indispensable. They could not have continued to operate without the guard. And so last Friday, we proclaimed last Friday, July 31st, Soldiers of the Indiana National Guard Day in acknowledgement of all their service to the community. I wish other people could have been there because members of the guard stood up and talked about how meaningful this work was to them, and that they had no idea of what goes into operating a food bank, the types of people that, that work there and whom it benefits. And a regional director for the guard, regional commander, I don't know his exact title, came and actually gave a coin from the guard to the director of Hoosier Hills Food Bank because of the connection that they have formed. It was an incredible thing. And then afterwards, the end of the lunch, Dustin Dillard organized a parade of emergency management vehicles to go through the lot. So it was quite a, quite an event.
That's lovely. Thank you for, thank you for going and representing us so ably. We appreciate it.
Well, like I said, it was my honor to be there, and the guard is just doing something that is so important to our community.
Absolutely, and clearly, Hoosier Hills Food Bank is, is doing a lot for our community, and we appreciate them so much, and we encourage people to, if they can, open their wallets and help out.
And they're, yeah, they're still trying to figure out if and how they can operate a book sale, because that's also a source of income for the food bank. So they're working on that still. They, they haven't, they're not dropping them all on anything.
Right, right. And I know some of the books went online for sale. So you can, you can go to their website and see that link. So that's a way to, to help as well, for sure. Excellent. Thank you so much for that. Now it is time for public comment, and this will be for items that are not on our agenda. And Ms. Dayton, would you sound the signal that folks will hear when they have 30 seconds left? Great. So you have three minutes total, and when you hear that sound, you have 30 seconds left. And again, this is for items not on our agenda. Who is up first?
There are no hands raised.
Well, that's even easier. We went through all of that. Well, thank you all for attending. I see, do see a number of attendees, so that's a nice thing. With that, we will move on to item five.
Move approval of the minutes for July 29th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, additions, corrections?
Nope.
I sent Ms. Freeman a correction, and it's already been taken care of, so it's really nice.
Right. Excellent. Very good, and thank you, Ms. Freeman, for that. I think Penny and I sent the same correction, two different days, sorry. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes, July 29th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell, and welcome back from your vacation. I'm glad you had a chance to have some time off as well. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable, August 5th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. A total for claims was $1,281,705.71. $163,874.18 was for food and beverage tax, and that was for the distribution of funds for the month of June. $161,281 was for Palmer Power and Truck Equipment, and that was for a 2021 Kenworth Dump Truck. And finally, $140,578.15 was for Fox Construction Company, and that was for a stormwater quality improvements project.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
With that, we will take public comment on this item. Does anyone have any comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any answers.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of claims docket accounts payable, August 5th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Claims are approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. And now we move on to new business.
Move to approve Parity Inc. agreement for the Sophia Travis Playscape Playground. Fund name, 2017 GeoBond, fund number 4810, in the amount of $61,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Welcome, Ms. Wittenberg. Good morning.
Hello, Kelly with Monroe County Parks and Recreation. And we're here to ask to replace the Sophia Travis Playscape top surface. And this is a company that we have, this is our second playground with them, and they're, they have a very good reputation. We highly recommend that we put in this product, and it will not be the same product that is on there currently.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, that I'm very pleased to hear that we're doing something that will contribute to the safety of all the children who play there. And it sounds like a good project.
Well, the, the kids have been playing on it so much that the, the surface is worn now, and the UV light has hit it, and it is such a popular playground.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
Is this, this is out at Cars Farm Park, right?
Correct. It's right next to the splash pad.
Right. I then have seen what bad condition this, this is in, and so I'm glad that you brought it to us.
Great. Yes, and thank you, and thanks to the Parks Board and your staff for working on this. Does anyone have any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve Parity Inc. agreement for the Sophia Travis Playscape Playground?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Right, thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve PlayPro Service Agreement for the Sophia Travis Playscape Playground. Fund name, 2017 GeoBond, fund number 4810, in the amount not to exceed $13,200.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, this is a professional playground surface installing corporation. They are going to work alongside our staff, and along with the trainer from Parity, we're going to gain knowledge. And hopefully, in the future, we will not need to purchase a professional help. This is a new product, and we want to make sure it goes in perfectly.
Right, thank you so much. Comments or questions, Ms. Jones?
That I'm pleased that it'll be a new skill that our staff will have.
Correct, because we have a second playground that, when we replace it, we'll probably replace it with this product also. We will have gained the knowledge, and we'll be able to do it on our own.
Thank you. Ms. Giffens, comments or questions?
I assume too that having that professionally installed will prolong the life of the, the surface then too.
Yes, I mean, you want to make sure everything is put in correctly, because you don't want the seams to go off, you know? Yes, to answer your question. It will make the surface longer, longevity.
Right. Great planning. Thank you for that. It's good to think ahead and, and try to get the most life we can out of the surface. Any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the PlayPro Service Agreement for the Sophia Travis Playscape Playground?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. Good to see you. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Lexipol Law Enforcement Policy Solution Agreement. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $9,425.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sheriff Swain, tell us about this.
Hi, one of the things that we're trying to make improvements on constantly is our policy. I've been familiar with Lexipol since I attended the FBI Academy in 2002. It is created by a gentleman with a long career in law enforcement and a background in risk management. With Lexipol, we will have the ability to merge our present policies with federal and state laws, court rulings, best-known practices across the country, and will work with a coordinator to establish, to get all of our policies put into place and updated and remain current. If there are new laws, court decisions, anything significant, then we once again will review a given policy that's under consideration and update it. The system also has a training module for the staff. So every month, they will have several different trackable training segments that they'll be obliged to to review the policies and take a small test. And it'll be, it will give examples and how policies and practices will come or would be applied. And I talked with Sheriff Branham just yesterday again on the issue. He's had this program going for quite a while now, since this year, I should say. And it's just that the deputies, it will be as much a part of their work week as making sure their car is safe and all their equipment is good, that they will be reviewing different policies and testing on them. And with this program, the policies and procedures will all be at their fingertips. There are phone apps, as well as there within their car. And of course, at the workstations here at the office, that they're always going to have access to the policy. There was a federal grant that covers for Indiana sheriffs, the first year of subscription. There's a startup fee which pays for the coordination with the representative from Lexipol that I'm going to pay for. Looks like we have money within our budget, so may not need to pay for that out of commissary. But in the future, we'd like the, the commissioners to have this annual subscription with Lexipol to be part of our tech fund or whatever, the Cooncap Fund, to just ensure the program continues in the future. I'm really excited to get this program going, and I would just like to have support of the county commissioners to ensure that once we have it implemented, which I anticipate before December, that we will be able to maintain this program. The other good advantage of this is that policies that are of an interest to the public, there, they will be in PDF format, and we can make those available on our website. There's a search, a word search within the document that's possible. So when people have a question about policy, they can research that for themselves that they would like. And it's just proven across the country with the agencies, police and fire agencies both use this. It's helped reduce risk liability. The more competent employees are with policies and procedures, they're going to perform better, make better decisions. And, you know, all of our policies and procedures should be just part of the muscle memory of the deputies in the future, once we get this program. in the future, once we get this program going.
Thank you, Sheriff Swain. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, this certainly sounds like a wonderful product. I especially like the sounds of the training module. That, I can imagine, will work really well. I was, I noticed that it's possible to customize it in many different ways. Do you see making many changes to tailor it to work more specifically with your department?
That's part of the advantage, and as the representative said, that on occasion, an agency may not want to go completely with the recommendations of what Lexipol offers or recommends, and her comment is at the, you know, in the end of everything, that I am the customer, so they would acquiesce, but they might say, these are the reasons that you might want to change or update this policy. I, in talking with her in a Zoom meeting last week, I got from her that that's not a very common occurrence. So, you know, it is customizable. What they're going to do is take our policies, which is a blend of the past sheriffs dating back to Jimmy Young in the 1980s. He had done a very good job of establishing a policy and procedure, and from the mid 80s to today, we've got just a blend of different sheriffs adding or changing policy. Some of those policies from the 80s were good policies. There's no reason to really update them, so, but it will take, we originally had them in different fonts and formats and three-ring binders, and it was just, we recently got them put all into the same format, but this is just going to help update every single policy we have, and there may be policies we didn't know we should have, so that'll be another advantage.
Yes, thank you. I'm also particularly pleased that it's going to make the policies so accessible to the public.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
Yeah, one of the things I noticed when I read through the information we were given was that the price was based upon the number of officers, and so if the number of officers changes, will the price change?
I doubt that we would have an increase in officers significant enough for that kind of price increase. I think it's, I didn't get down to if it's per individual officer or just within a different, different agency sizes, but we didn't have a conversation of any increase if we added officers.
Okay. And then also, I would love to hear feedback after six, nine, 12 months to see how you think it's, it's working, and, you know, what kind of impact it's having.
What, yes, I'll, I'll just, I'm happy to provide updates during commissioner meetings. I telephoned one of the county attorneys yesterday and asked if he would be part of our group that does the adapting, so, working with Lexipol to bring this on board, to have some, another legal insight with Indiana law and things. It's going to require our group to meet with Lexipol twice a week for two-hour sessions, and we'll just go over the different policies discussed, make the changes, and there are different, in addition to reviewing policies, this company also has a good video segments on different issues, where the founder talks about risk management, or any, any number of issues dealing with mental health, and they have ongoing webinars as well when different issues come up. But I am happy to provide updates on this. Additionally, they offer this for the jails, and it's based on bed space. She did not recommend doing the jail and patrol at the same time. It would be pretty daunting, but it would be less expensive for the annual cost than the patrol side, and what I'm hoping is that we'll receive a federal grant in the future to cover that first-year fee for the corrections side. This grant only applies for the law enforcement part of the sheriff's offices.
Thank you, Commissioner Giffens. We know, Sheriff Swain, we know that a lot of policies from the 80s are no longer applicable. Some of them don't change, obviously, but, so, so just so I'm clear, and so the public is clear, your policies on things like chokeholds and things like that will be input into this system, will be visible to everybody in the public, and will be part of the system. Will be made part of the system.
Yeah, one of the things that really made me want to go with Lexipol is we, I had a state police captain, as well as my staff, sit down and go through the 21st Century Policing Recommendations, and we did update our use of force to be consistent. It's something that we do on a regular basis, but this also, Lexipol also takes into consideration the eight things that can't wait, as well as the 21st Century Policing Recommendations, in addition to everything else I said. But as a result of sitting down, going through line by line on the recommendations of 21st Century Policing, we did make some updates on force continuum. There's been a mandate from the White House about these. One of the things that someone was astute when they talked with the president about was, we don't do chokeholds, but there's a technique called carotid restraint, which cuts off blood flow, not air, and he included, not, that mandate included the carotid restraint, to not be using that in the, anymore as well. There's a chance for blood damage when one doesn't do that properly, or doesn't do that properly. So, going through the 21st Century Policing and talking with the representative, that the, that they also factor in the eight can't wait, 21st Century Policing with everything else, I thought this is something we really need to get on board with. It'll just simplify and take a lot of the policy work out of our hands.
That's great. Yeah, and that's exactly what I was going to ask about, were those two things, the 21st Century Policing from the Obama administration and the eight can't wait. So, thank you for that. That's, that's excellent news. Any comments or questions from the public?
There are no hands raised.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Lexapro Law Enforcement Policy Solution Agreement?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion passes three, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Thank you, Sheriff Swain. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-36, Highway Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, and this is, we got some information from the highway department that they had some items to be surplus, include those, included in those are five different dump trucks, a, some cameras, and then a signaling for a railroad crossing that's being decommissioned. These will all be sold at auction, except for the railroad crossing signaling, because the French Lick Railroad Museum would like to have that as part of their inventory, and so this would allow us to give that to them and get it out of the highway department's garage.
Excellent. Ms. Ridge, did you have anything to add?
I do. I want to say thank you to the commissioners. Last year's bond, we just received our fourth dump truck that you had purchased for us, so we're getting rid of these five, and then we have five more dump trucks coming in that we leased purchased out of the MVH budget. Of course, we still have a lot of things that still need replacement. It's a work in progress, and we do what we can, but I just want to thank you guys again for your support for the highway department.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ridge, and I don't know why you don't want to keep the railroad signal.
I wouldn't know why either.
Yeah. How old is that thing?
Well, you know, well, it's less than 33 years, because I've been there that long, and it was put in within that amount of time, but.
Right, right.
I'm glad we found a museum to actually want it, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good thing. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
It just is fun that it's going to the French Lick Cream Museum. I've never been there, but I may visit it sometime.
Yeah, well, we'll make a field trip to go visit it. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Okay, it's going to be a post-COVID field trip, right? Okay.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, I was amazed that, how the link got made between, you know, this equipment and the railroad museum down in French Lick. I mean, how did that even happen?
You're muted.
Get that.
So Paul Satterley, our engineer, he has a huge background in railroad, and it goes back through his grandpa was huge into railroad, so he has so much knowledge, so much history, that he is, he is a railroad guru. So I believe he got in touch with the museum to see if they would be interested.
Very nice. Wow.
Awesome. We'll have to invite Paul and Lisa on the field trip.
As long as we don't go in one of the new dump trucks, okay?
No, no, no. All right, excellent. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2020-36?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Resolution is approved three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your help. It's always nice to end on a fun note. With that, we don't have any appointments today. We do have some announcements. Just reminded everybody that the, that county buildings are closed to the public but are open by appointment, and that's to ensure everybody's wearing face coverings when they're visiting. If you don't have face covering, please let, let the folks know before you attend for the visit, and we'll provide that for you. We do have Dina Delauter Myers from our commissioners' office Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. She's handing out these free, this is a larger version, free window decals for businesses and social service agencies in our community. You can pick one up at the north door of the courthouse, nine to four, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Also, she will be handing out face shields and face masks to those who need them as well on the same days at the same time, north door of the courthouse. And also see that list on the website as well, on the emergency management website, of other places to pick up your protective gear. Just a note again that for those folks in our community, we know folks are suffering. We know people are dealing with the reduction in unemployment benefits from the federal level. We know that the moratorium on evictions and utility shut-offs has ended, so we just want to remind everybody that the commissioners and the council work together to provide township, a township assistance fund, and this money is, and every resident of the county lives in a township. If you are struggling or you're anticipating that you're going to be struggling with housing and food and utilities and things like that, please contact your township trustee, the sooner the better, and they can help you. They have all kinds of programs that you can access through them, plus, of course, we have provided that additional assistance, because we know Monroe County residents are hurting. Also, a note, just a reminder that there is a complaint form for, through the Health Department, that's on the main page of the website, co.munro.in.us, and that's where you can write up a complaint or issue that you find at a business, retail establishment, things like that. Is not for, underlining again, this is not for reporting on an individual's use of face coverings. There's also the form on that same, on the homepage as well, which, which you can fill out if you want to, on an exemption to the crowd-size gathering, and this is for the non-commercial entities. And there's, it's about two and a half pages, just a web form to fill out, but asks a lot of questions, but it, but it gets you to think about how you're going to protect everybody at the gathering. So if you do, if you do plan to, or want to plan to have a large gathering, please use that form and fill it out in advance, which gives our Health Department staff, which is already doing a lot of work, the time to review it, to look at your safety plan, and to ensure that things are, are good to go. Also, a note on our website as well is co.munro.in.us is our, the forum for businesses and social services in the community to fill out for CARES funding. So this would be a COVID, for COVID-related expense for supplies and cleanings and things like that, not personnel, but it's for COVID-related expenses that have not been covered already by a Monroe County grant, a city loan, or PPE funding, or one of the other grant programs that have been offered by the state or the federal government. So if you have an unreimbursed expense related to COVID, please fill out that form. You're going to need to send in your receipts, and you'll be working with the wonderful DO, and, and we will make sure that you are taken care of. So with that, I wanted to see if my colleagues have anything to add. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to remind people about the food distribution this Friday at Hoosier Hills Food Bank. I think it, again, is supposed to open at 11, but that's, yeah, I think it goes until 3 o'clock. Also, this week, the plans were that the Stride Center was going to open. I think COVID impacted even that again, but the current hope is that we'll be up and running by the middle of August at this point.
Great. Great, thank you for that update. Really proud to partner with a lot of entities in the community to make that happen, a way to divert people from a hospital or jail when they're in crisis. So it's a really good thing. Excellent. And with that, our next meeting is Wednesday, August 12, and unless there's anything else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Be well.